1:01 PM, David Karen, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. So reorganization meeting for the Gasparry Select Board. And the first order of business will be the nomination of Select Board Officers. We'll take a nomination for the Chair.
Nominate Art.
You have a second?
Second.
Joe? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So all in favor is 4-0-1, an abstention, Art? Art, you're muted.
Yes, I abstained.
Okay, so Art is nominated and elected as Select Board Chair by a vote of 4-0-1. So Art, I'll turn over the nominations to you for the Vice Chair.
Okay, open up the meeting for, open up the nominations for Vice Chair.
Nominate Tony.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those. So that's 4-0-1, Tony abstaining. Okay, um, thank you, everybody, for, for the vote. I will try to do my best to, uh, conduct the meetings and, uh, I've got some pretty big shoes to fill here, so. Um, okay, uh, this is the meeting where we have to tell the public how we're organized, the rules we're going by, and so on and so forth. So the very first thing I have to do is ask if there's a conflict of interest of, on anything appearing on the agenda as is posted.
No.
No.
No. Hearing none, we will continue. This being the organizational meeting, the very first thing that we have to do is rules of procedure. They are about three pages long. You probably have all been sent this, but I think it's only right that we at least walk through and paraphrasing the, the best that I understand it, so that the public knows what we're going by. The Select Board is required by law to have meetings, and the meetings are open to the public. There is going to be a Chair which was just elected and a Vice Chair. The Chair is, shall, uh, enforce all the rules. The, the Chair or the Acting, or the Acting Chair shall be the official signer of all documents. The Chair or, or the Acting Chair shall be the primary media contact unless we have discussed otherwise. The Chair may sign warrants. And he actually may sign a warrant if it's been a pre-approved or is in the budget. So we don't always have to have, uh, a vote on some of the warrants if it's been pre-approved and so on and so forth. The, all these, um, all these meetings are recorded, and there is a stenographer that then, types up the meetings, uh, that they're then posted on the website. Are they, are they posted before we approve them? Dave, how does that work?
They are posted, uh, before they're approved.
Okay.
There's a statutory requirement off the top of my head, I think it's a couple, it's three or four days, I don't.
Okay. All right, uh, a- as far as the meetings, uh, we have to have, uh, this is a five-member board. We have to have a minimum of three members. Uh, if there is not a quorum, then the only action we can take is to adjourn the meeting. The public, the, the rule, the public can participate in the meeting. Uh, if, we will review the rules before each meeting of how the public can participate. We are, uh, offering a public comments, uh, in the agenda. And if somebody wants to make a comment during our discussion, he must be recognized by the Chair. Each Select Board meeting will have an agenda, and the agenda can be, uh, changed before the meeting starts if there is a consensus. The agenda has to be posted, that's, that's Dave's responsibility. Uh, all business shall be conducted in the same order as it appears on the agenda unless it's, uh, we've, uh, can, uh, decided to change that. Meetings may be, uh, put into recess and, and, uh, and for instance, if we had to go out and look at a, something outside or something like that, they can be recessed in place that is, uh, and come to a certain time. All members shall abide by the conflict of interest policy. If a person is, does have a conflict of interest, they cannot vote. Uh, although I believe that they can be, act as a citizen and can be part of the discussion, but they cannot vote on anything. Uh, we are operating under Robert's Rules of Small Meeting, of Small Boards. Uh, Dave has the book, I think, At All Times, we can, uh, check it out if we have to. The time and place for all meetings will be decided annually at, at the organizational meeting, and I have a list of them. We want to do that now.
Uh, that's coming up, uh, a little further down.
Okay.
But we can do that now if you'd like.
Why don't we go through this, we, uh, let's do this, there's just one more. And there is also a list of what we can, what we're calling liaison members, in other words, a Select Board member has a, has a certain responsibility to, so a certain department in the, in the, uh, in the, uh, in the office or, or, uh, in the town, uh, and we have a list of that which will be published uh, if everybody agrees to what they're, what they've done, okay, what we've got you down for. So probably we should, uh, probably ask for a motion that we accept these rules as they've been stated.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So carried, uh, do we have to, should I be signing that in your office sometime, Dave?
Yeah, you can, when, when you stop in tomorrow for our meeting, uh, I'll have that for you to sign.
Okay.
And we are still operating under COVID rules where the Chair or the Select Board is allowed to sign for the whole board after a, a recorded vote.
Okay. Okay, uh, what's, what, what's next, is that the, uh?
Well, we have the liaison listings.
Yeah.
Which I can, uh.
I'm gonna pull that up.
Yeah, let me figure out how to share my screen with you here. The screen being. Here we go. I think you can see it now, this is the liaison groups. Which has the wrong year on the top, but it is 21.
So why, why don't, uh, why don't everybody look at that, uh, and we will adopt them next month, or next meeting? If everybody is happy with what they're, if you aren't, then we can work on it over the next couple of weeks, but we will adopt it next meeting, does that make sense? Rather than sure. Spend a lot of time now.
Sounds good, Art.
Okay. So, uh, that'll be an action item that we will adopt those next meeting if there's any changes or make any changes and then adopt them. Appointment policy. Josh. Okay, this, this policy basically is saying that if there is a vacancy on one of the boards, I'm talking about the Planning Commission, the DRB, then the the, um, the committee that has the vacancy has, is, it is recommended that they, look for a replacement. They come back to us with the name of a replacement, it is up to us to vote on it and accept it. If we do not accept it, it just goes back to them for another name. If they have none, then the board, this board can make us, make a recommendation based on some of the candidates that applied for the, for the job.
And just a clarification, this, this is for all appointments outside of the DRB and PC, they have their own, uh, rulebook.
Okay, this isn't just for those, okay?
No, this is for everyone other than those two.
Okay. Entertain a motion to accept this, uh, appointment policy?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so carried. Do we need all signatures on this or just mine?
Yes, yours for now, under the polls.
Okay, town officials. Rather than vote on each one, uh, I will read a slate of officers and then accept them, or a slate of, uh, people that have been, each of these people have been contacted and they have agreed to, uh, form in their, in this particular capacity. And I'll take a, vote on them all at once if that's okay. Animal Control Officer, Tracy Mulligan. BC Regional Commissioners, Cindy Morris, Kenny Harrington. Energy Coordinator, Ben Hewlett. Health Officer, Jackie Myers. Deputy Health Officer, Tracy Mulligan. Town Service Officer, Jackie Myers. Tree Warden, Jim White. Emergency Management Director, Paul Dissern. Emergency Management Coordinator, Dave Kernan. Uh, entertain a motion to accept the slate of people as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. These are all for a one-year term, I forgot to, to mention that. Also, uh, we need to, uh, publicly say when our selectmen's meetings are, will be and all the other, uh, board meetings. Uh, Select Board, 6:30 every first and third Monday. Development Review Board, 7:00 PM, first and third Wednesday. Planning Commission, 7:00 PM, second and fourth Tuesday. Recreation Committee, 10:00 AM. The Fourth Friday. Economic Development Committee is to be determined at, uh, if the Select Board decides it needs that committee to be activated. Cemetery Committee, 9:00 AM, first Wednesday, uh, from April through November. I get, I was just reading that as a public information, but maybe we ought to adopt that as those, so I would entertain a motion that we adopt these times and places, times and meetings for these different boards.
I make a motion that, uh, we follow the plan that you mentioned.
Second.
We have a, a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
I, Dave, those are all published on the website.
Yes.
Yes, and the, um, the link of the, are they Zoom meetings at this point?
Everything will be Zoom meetings, hopefully, before, not too much longer.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right now, everything's on Zoom.
On the web, okay, good, just for the public to know.
Okay. So I have a, I have a, um, a motion of first and a second. And even no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried.
Art, we have, uh, two more appointments we should do here for Water Commissioners, for Michael Kincaut, Kincautki, and for Joe Barber to serve as Water Commissioners consecutively with their terms as selectmen.
Everybody understand that?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I also asked Tim Scoggins to be a, uh, ad hoc member without, without a vote, uh, because of his in, involvement in coming up with the, uh, letter that we sent to the Water Board of North Bennington and so on and so forth, so, uh, I guess I would entertain a motion to have him as an ad hoc, non-voting member of the Water Board until the, uh, the, the, uh, business of North Bennington has been settled.
So moved.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so carried. Okay, thank you.
Uh, did we just take Mike, uh, member of the Water Board too, or no?
Pardon?
Did we make Mike, the new board member, a member of the Water Board show out?
We did.
Yeah, we just did.
We just did, yeah, we do. Mike, Mike and Joe were, were voted in.
Okay, I didn't hear Mike's statement, that was all.
Any other appointments or any other official to make this, get this meeting official, Dave?
Nope, that's everyone.
Okay. So we'll start in with the minutes. Uh, I'd like to take them in the order with the oldest. Oldest being voted on first, that, uh, I believe that is the February 15th, is that not right?
That's correct, February 15th.
And is, is that the one that there is a that's the one that there is a statement that isn't quite true in that, is that not right?
I'm bringing it up, yeah, well, let me see here.
Paragraph nine. What?
Yes, number nine needs to be amended, Art.
Okay, this, this, uh, these minutes are correct in that, in the way they were recorded, but there was a statement that was made during the meeting that, uh, is not factual. It was under Tim's impression that Tom Daley did, was not the town moderator, that he'd not been voted in by the people, and we later discovered that it was, so we really can't change the minutes because they were recorded accurately, but we need to make a footnote that that particular statement, uh, was found to be not correct later on. So, uh, can I have a motion to, uh, accept, uh, February 15th minutes?
So moved.
Second.
And, uh, with the, with the statement that there will be a footnote that Tom Daley was the mo, was voted the moderator for that, for that, and for that year.
So moved.
Second.
And he's got to say aye.
Aye.
My, says my internet is a little bit shaky.
Yeah, you're froze up for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, um.
You're talking about having a.
Did I hear?
A retraction, right, from this?
We're, we're making a footnote that a statement was made in the minutes, they were recorded accurately, but they, but the statement was not accurate, we're just making a footnote, just 10 years from now, somebody say, well, look at, they didn't follow the rules because they, so on and so forth, but.
Just a retraction from the minutes.
Yep. Uh, I didn't hear affirmative on that, can I have a vote again?
Yes.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Uh, next one is February 25th, is that right?
Yes.
February 25th. Entertain a motion to accept them?
So moved.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody abstain, anybody that's so carried?
I'm abstaining just since I wasn't at these meetings.
Okay. Motion is carried for, for 01. And the last one is
The 28th.
The actual 28th, which is our informational meeting, which I guess it really was a selectmen's meeting since we opened it and closed it. So therefore, uh, entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Oh, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. Uh, warrants.
Okay, uh, the first one is up on the screen, it's payroll warrant 18. Or, let's see, $26,292.51.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a, uh, motion to accept payroll warrant, uh, for $26,292.51, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried.
The next one is check warrant. Have to have my readers on to see this, check warrant, uh, 28, for a total of
Their motion?
So moved.
Second.
I will just scroll down through some of these, A&amp;K Agro Services, $24.96, that's hauling material from Wallingford. Uh, we have Alpenaxi Salt, we're about 9,000. Uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield, 8,003.39. Uh, Bear Comm at 1835 is radio equipment for the fire department. Uh, the Benton County Sheriff has 1710. Uh, let's see here, Bow Fuel, uh, 1,078 and 726. Our monthly list of multiple Green Mountain Power Bills. Uh, Hayden Plumbing and Heating, which was for well, that just escaped me, I'm sorry, I'll get you back to you on that one, we're Hayden. You had, uh, 1456, which was radio equipment for the Deputy Chief's Fire Response Vehicle. And, uh, Wallingford Crestone for 976, which is, uh, gravel for the roads.
Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, can I ask about the Sheriff's Department?
Yes.
Where, are they patrolling at all, or are they just, uh, accrediting us with their stopping of, for tickets and stuff?
No, actually, I read their day sheets, uh, every month, uh, they have, uh, we currently have a couple of, uh, good active, uh, deputies who, uh, don't, you know, sit in one place, they're around.
Okay.
But we do watch where they go and what, what they're doing. I think it's been, uh, pretty good for the last few months, it's a little bit below our contract rate, but, uh, you know, it's been good, I think. And we can always adjust to anybody who has a traffic complaint for speeding that. And I also have a speed device so we can, uh, check roads, like we've had it on Cleveland, that was our experimental street, and, uh, the average speeds turned out to be very low there. So, uh, there's ways we can address any issue, though.
Good, thank you, no, 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 I got a ticket, but, yeah.
Okay, um, no further discussion, uh, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant for $36,984 and some odd cents? Say aye.
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 Aye. So, so, so moved. Set it on warrants, Dave?
That's it for the warrants, yes.
Okay. Any announcement, anybody have any announcements? I think the only thing I have is that the, uh, CDC is constantly changing, uh, now that some people are vaccinated and that sort of stuff, I think rather than us, uh, posting it here, because probably it'll be a week or two old, uh, just be aware that, uh, there are changes in this, in the CDC's recommendation for people that have been vaccinated. Anybody else have any announcements? Public comments, anybody from the public, I don't see anything, but there may be somebody calling in. Seeing none, uh, Treasure Report, Melanie, are you there?
Yes, I am, hi, everybody.
Hi, Melanie.
Uh, could we start out with the, uh, February, uh, cash flow? Because we didn't have a chance to see that one yet. Okay, boy, I need my readers too.
Yeah, wait, let me blow this up a little bit.
Okay, good, excellent, um, the, the big number you see there, the, the money due to the general fund, I, I took care of all of the accumulated due to, due from, so that gave us our real cash position for about five minutes, and then you guys, um, muddied it up again by writing a big check for, um, I don't remember, for road cleanup or something. But anyway, so for, very briefly, that was exactly the, the correct amount of cash at the bottom line, but that's what that 233,000 is. You see another big hefty, uh, delinquent tax, um, amount there, Mird's been working overtime. So, and then very little going on other than, well, the, you saw that you wrote $325,000 in checks last month, so that's, that's what threw things off again, but you go down to the bottom line there. Um, that's a, a pretty believable cash position, which is very nice, it's gonna get us through the rest of the year, um, you know, knock on wood. We're in, in much better shape than we were last year, strangely enough. I've mentioned that a couple of times, so things are looking good. If you want to look down to the very bottom, that shows us the, um, how we are versus budget, is it on there, yeah, there we go. Um, I've got, maybe that's just on my screen, I got people's faces covering up last year, but, but what I'm, uh, what we're seeing is that the revenues are, um, actually above 100%, I've said that a couple, the explanation for that, I've mentioned a couple of times, that we sold some equipment, so there was a little bit of, um, extra cash coming in under revenues, but that was just a, sort of a, a one-time windfall. The expenditures as of this point of the year are almost precisely what they were last year, I think last year it was like 71% and it's, as I say, I can't see it because it's behind people, but, um, so, I, I believe that it's, uh, very similar to last year except fair. People, but um, so I I believe that it's uh, very similar to last year, except very slightly better. So uh, that's looking good. So so does anybody have any questions about February?
Melanie, I'm just, I just happened to notice a Lister's reappraisal. That's that's money that the state gives us in anticipation that someday we'll have to do a townwide reappraisal. Is that right?
Right. And we also put, I believe that there's a voter-approved appropriation every every year to to bring that up. So once once we get out of um, alignment with our appraised values, uh, then then we're going to need to uh, invest fairly heavily in a in a townwide reappraisal. So we we have taken the uh, smart uh, path of accumulating money in there for for when we need it. But right now, we're in really good shape, so we're not going to need one anytime soon as far as uh, things look right now. But yeah, so that's in a um, a set that's not co-mingled with our other cash. That's a separate CD that um, gets a little bit better. Not great interest, but a little bit better.
Um, with houses selling like crazy, that that may be a factor in a year or so, but.
Yeah, I think uh, that's true. Yeah, but as of right now, it it that might actually bring us closer to to.
I see.
Parity, so um, but is is that not right, Dave? We're.
Yeah, it is. I'll I'll clarify one thing. We no longer put money in the reappraisal reserve fund that the town did. Because this amount uh, is more than enough to reappraise the town already.
Okay, yeah, it was in previous years. I think it was voter approved. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions about February? Okay, so if we could look at the reserve account for February, I'll make this real quick. Um, basically, you're just going to see the other side of the that uh, two hundred thirty three thousand dollars. Because those were all coming out of the reserve accounts. Um, so we had a sort of an um, inflated cash uh, appearance in the reserve accounts. But you look at that, at that debit column, that's what I'm talking about. So there was a whole bunch of money that was owed the general fund because you were writing some big checks on the class three roads. That's the main one. See a hundred eleven thousand there. Um.
New truck too.
Right, yes, yes. Um, so the the bottom line there, if you go, if you scroll down just a little bit more, um, it's looking like we've got six hundred thousand. That's going to go down as soon as I do the um, account for the checks you wrote later in February. So I'll be doing that when I close March out. Any questions about any of that? Okay, we can take a real quick look at the uh, at the cash um, for for the middle of March. It's not terribly informative. I'll just show you that not much is going on. Basically, all I do all day long is give people their tax bills uh, these days because they threw them out as they always do, and they need them to do their taxes. So um, not much else going on. I can see a lot of um, transfer station money came in, and I have to say a couple hundred dollars of that was in quarters. That's that's the other thing I spend my day doing. Everybody's clearing out their their coin drawers. Um, so yep, not very much else going on in either the revenue or the uh, expenditure side as of this point in the in the month. So and the the same story in the in reserve accounts. You can look at it if you want to, but I'll tell you, it doesn't say anything except a very little amount of money coming in for water. Any questions about any of that?
Everybody fine?
Yep.
Thank you, Melanie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie.
Okay, uh. Fire Department extrication equipment.
Okay, the fire department has a proposal uh, to purchase some new battery op- a battery-operated extrication cutter. Uh, this will be paid for in three parts. This is all out of our budget and out of the Shasberry Fire Company contribution funds. So uh, the fire department, fire company itself will pay five thousand five hundred and fifty three dollars. And out of the fire department budget from the town will pay six thousand. The tool itself is eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy five dollars. Uh, it's used to cut high-strength steel found in a lot of today's vehicles, especially foreign models or high-end vehicles. It also have the flexibility to use in other firefighting applications. Um, extrication tools are, you know, critical. You know, you don't use them all the time, but when you need it, it's best to have the proper tool. The electric one is great because you can actually uh, carry it down an embankment and use it on a car that might have rolled off the roadway without having a, you know, to worry about the hydraulics of the old style where you would have to have it connected to something. So it's actually, I didn't even know they made electric ones. This is this is actually pretty cool.
Don't we have a gas-powered one now?
Uh, I wouldn't venture to say what they have now, but this would would be uh, an improvement over that.
This is also known as the jaws of life. Is that right?
Yeah, this would be in that family of equipment, yeah.
Right. This is more of a cutoff wheel to cut through steel, cut through the roof and the A pillar, B pillars to get them out of there.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
What are they going to do with the one they've got now, David? What have they got now?
Uh, I would assume, and I did not ask Joe that question. I would assume you keep that as a backup or use it to trade in on this one. So it goes off to some other department, but uh, uh, I don't have an exact answer to that.
Would we be getting any money for the, you know, for the sale of what we got?
Uh, if they intend to sell it, but I didn't discuss whether what they were going to do with their current one or whether it is actually saleable.
Do we know what the run? Do we know what the runtime is on the on the battery-powered one?
Let me see here.
The lithium, I'm sure, right?
It is. Yeah, it's an M twenty eight lithium ion. Uh, I am going to have to get my readers for some of this stuff. Doesn't give a runtime on this page.
I would imagine it's got more than one battery anyway.
Yeah, and you know, these things are kept, usually things like this are kept with the battery packs, like the trucks are always plugged in, so it's it's always uh, kept charged.
Yeah.
I think the important thing is is that uh, this is in the fire department's budget that they presented to us. And it's their their decision. They're they're the ones that have to decide what 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 to get and which ones are best. As long as they put it in their budget, I don't think we can uh.
Argue against it, yeah.
Argue against it or anything, okay?
Oh, I wouldn't argue against it. I would just information more.
Yeah.
Okay, I I was just curious. I thought we had a gas-powered one. I.
Oh, I don't, I don't know. I asked Joe. I know we.
We do have an extrication team on Shasberry, right?
Yeah. I'm not actually familiar with gas-powered ones because introducing a gas-powered thing and gasoline into some situations would be kind of risky.
I know the jaws of life is gas-powered.
Yeah, but the the unit stays on the truck and then they run.
I used to run off hydraulic, so I I'm not sure. You never got any motor near what you were trying to cut. Especially far where you might have flammable liquids. Black and asking, we we can find out.
Uh, being part of their budget, uh, I don't know. Is there is necessary for a vote by this uh, board? Is that right, Dave?
No, it doesn't require a vote. Uh, the fire department has always uh, liked to keep the board apprised of what they're planning to purchase.
They were talking about getting new radios. Was it uh, GPS or what? What were they talking about? They wanted to get new radios.
Uh, we picked up a couple of new radios. Uh, I'll have to get your details on that. I haven't really thought about the radios in a while. We haven't bought one in a while.
Okay, any other? Discussion? Uh, transfer station, Casella.
Well, the transfer station contract expires in July, July first, June thirtieth, actually. Uh, we need to begin discussing with Casella. I've spoken with them a few times. There's a lot on the table here, including the fact that of longer transportation from materials from our transfer station to now where they will be taking them. Uh, so what I'm looking for is the parameters of how we're going to negotiate. I can get the guys in from Casella, uh, but we need to have a member or two from the board uh, minimum to uh, sit down when we have these meetings with them. This we're negotiating a contract and it'd be uh, there's there's a number of things on the table here.
Is there anybody else you could contact other than Casella?
Well, we can certainly put this out to bid uh, and then hope that Casella bids. Because it's inconceivable to me that we're going to get a better price for someone to drive in from New York or Massachusetts if they're licensed here to come take all this garbage and bring it back. And they can't bring it to New York anyway. So to me, I, you know, I know it's a difficult situation when Casella basically runs most of this in the state and certainly down here. But um, you know, I like, I think it's Weber out of Bennington or something. I mean, where's they, where are they going to take this stuff to? We're still going to be paying the same thing, if not more, because everybody who touches it is going to want a carrying charge. So this A picks it up, they have to make up the price that they take it to the transfer station, which the only ones around here that I'm aware of are Casella. So it's a it's something that we never bid out for TAM. And this is just a change of ownership in this contract. Uh, I think we should see what they have to say.
I'm just thinking, David, if if nothing else, it would keep the seller honest. In other words, they would, they might, you know, they just kind of consider they might have a competition. You never know.
Well, that's that's up to the board. That can be an up and a downside. Uh.
Dave, if you you made the comment that if we put it out to bid and nobody bids on it, where does that leave us?
Well, hoping that Casella takes us back.
Leaves us holding the bag.
Yeah, because if uh, nobody bid on it, we have a real issue. I mean, eventually the state would force someone to take our garbage. But uh, you know, we're in a better position, I think, just to negotiate with um, the main player. I, like I said, if anyone can tell me, and I haven't heard it through the SWIP of anyone else who has a transfer station anywhere within a reasonable driving distance of Shasberry where it wouldn't cost a fortune to move this stuff. Uh, I'd be interested. I mean, you have the transfer station in Bennington, not the town one, Casella's, and the big one in Sunderland. So the TAM facility in Shasberry is closed. So our stuff has to be trucked somewhere. It was bad enough when we were paying to truck it across the street. Now we're actually going to have to send it somewhere. And if it's a more distant carrier, we're going to have to send it even further. You know, I mean, even like the guys that drive around and make the local pickups, you know, they have thirty, forty customers, they're taking it to the scale house. And their their small scale allows them to do that, but we're not talking small scale. We're talking people are going to have to have an investment in equipment to move a lot of containers every week. And I think that's a different ballgame.
Well, what if, what if there's somebody around that could bring in a packer container and they can take and leave there and pick it, work them up or something?
Do what?
Big packer container, Dave. Well, you see a lot of times it, uh, oh, some of the, some of the uh, shopping centers around the city, you'll see these big packer containers. They'll hang out, put out behind, say Walmart or somewhere. They put that in there?
We have that now. We have a packer at the transfer station.
Yeah, but I, well, I don't know. Maybe I've not explained it right, or maybe I don't understand. Packers is for what? At the station? That's our packer, though, isn't it?
It's, no, it's a house, it's a household garbage packer.
Oh, trash compactor?
Yeah, trash compactor. But it's a full-size forty-foot container that compact. It's like the back of a garbage truck laying on the ground.
Nice.
The whole thing. And they empty that out up to twice a week, depending. You know, obviously, it depends on the volume that week, but that has to be moved out. The paper container has to be moved out. The uh, mixed recyclables has to be moved out. The C and D has to be moved out. The white goods have to be moved out. You know, when it was gets into a lot of different areas. Right now, Casella is responsible for all the things except for the household stuff. That's what we collect money on. So we're asking someone to come in. Uh, the only companies I know around here are much, much smaller. And asking them to take on a pretty big operation and then move this stuff uh, to different places. And we don't own that packer. That packer goes down, they have to bring a new packer to us. You get a small guy, the packer goes down. I mean, you know, it's uh, again, it's all to scale. It's it's hard to, you can come in and compete like like uh, Gittergun and a few other companies do with root customers. But trying to go after these transfer stations, that's kind of a different ballgame.
You have to have somebody with rollbacks.
Yeah.
A fleet of rollbacks, right?
Yep.
A minimum.
Yeah.
There's one that, and who is it follows? Uh, God, I can't think of the name of it. County Waste?
Yeah, County Waste. They do no business in Vermont. And there's, I think that's a licensing thing, but can I look into that? I can easily make a phone call and find out.
Yeah, I mean, all I'm thinking of is if any other company anywhere, I mean, maybe somebody don't like Casella and he wants to go up a new area. You know, it it's.
Get wine.
Yeah.
Let's have a town incinerator. Yeah.
Uh, all I'm saying is somewhere, there's got to be competition somewhere. And all I'm asking for is look for.
Okay, well, what we can do is I'll I'll uh, see like County Waste, yeah, County Waste and Republic are both very large. None of them do business around here. And.
Casella does business in Mass, right?
Yes, and TAM did business in Mass and business in New York.
So do do they have to get special licensing for each state or?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
And uh, you don't see many New York carriers operating in here. There's a mass one that operates in Woodford, I think, uh, very small scale. But I tell you what, you know, for the next meeting, I'll look into this, but we do have to, I have to initiate something with Casella because the ninety-day rule is coming up very quickly.
No, I'm, like I said, David, I'm just thinking that somewhere, somewhere, there's always got to be some competition.
No, I, you know, I would prefer if someone in town had a few roll-offs and uh, a compactor and wanted to take this over, but uh, that's, I don't see it on the horizon.
Kenny, you know how to drive big equipment? You can buy a garbage truck and save the.
I don't have a CDR anymore.
Oh, okay. So I think the the original question is, who should negotiate? E- even if it's not with TAM, somebody's got to negotiate. So uh, we can't have, we can only have two people. If you have three, then that has to be, all the meetings have to be warned or have to be public meetings and so on and so forth. So I guess I'm looking for a volunteer that would want to help with the negotiations. I think probably as chairman, I probably ought to be one of them. And does anybody else want to be part of it?
I will, but uh.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't see who that was.
That, Ken.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I'm going to put out uh, a call to the people I talked to at Casella. And let's just at least have a preliminary con- uh, discussion with them because that's who in the contract we can renew with. But I think we're changing so much of this contract, or it's going to have to change, that uh, we should get at least a sound reading on where, what they're viewing it as. You know, just continuation or are there new things coming up? And there always seems to be something new coming up with them. Um, like closing the TAM facility. I didn't know that was coming up. So uh, I will make some phone calls and we'll find a time probably in the morning uh, where we can sit down with the guys. One of them's from Massachusetts and one's from right up here, so uh, we'll Zoom meeting or something because we're not going to be able to sit down. There's too many of us.
I can't till after eleven tomorrow.
Oh, it says no, I'll I'll give you a few dates when I can set something.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be a ways down.
I I guess I'd I'd like to ask the board what their opinion is. Do they, do do we think we want the town still to be involved by having an employee there? Or should we actually consider turning it everything right over to TAM, just like what Bennington has done? Not TAM, but to to Casella. Is is there value in having somebody? A town employee uh, there or? And and then then it gets kind of constick- sticky who's responsible for this and that and all that sort of stuff. Or we can give it up completely, just like what Bennington has done. Or we can give it up completely, just like what Bennington has done. And, and so on and so forth. Just, I, I need some of. Oh, input from you folks.
Okay, so, so let's weigh, let's weigh it out. So what are the benefits of having somebody there versus not? We have eyes near us on the ground and, you know, somebody that can say, hey, this isn't right.
The.
That could add some value.
The only, only responsibility of the Shaftesbury employee at the transfer station. Is to sell pay it stickers.
Okay.
And we, we have no control over anything other than selling pay it stickers. Casella by contract. Is responsible for everything else on that property.
Okay, understood.
Been for years. Uh, and that's one of the, the core questions. You know, they had, they're responsible for everything that goes on there. We're only responsible to sell the stickers. And the stickers like in Sunderland and in Bennington, I believe in Bennington, I know in Sunderland. Are sold by, because one Casella employee who operates the stations.
Well, people that wanted a sticker could just go to the town office and get one, right?
Uh, you know, it's, that adds a level to it that just makes it confusing and cash flow. It'd be easier. To do it just the way we're doing it. It's just, uh, do we have the one person there? And if, 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 big if. If by some chance Casella turns out to be the one who winds up operating the station, we would have nothing to do with the pay it money. We wouldn't collect it, we wouldn't get it. But the contract would be negotiated down. To make up for that income that they would be getting, the estimated income they'd be getting. Because right now, the transfer station is subsidized. By the rest of the community, the non-users, because it doesn't generate enough cash to pay for itself.
Would they be able to control the person about that or, right now we're setting the price, right?
Yeah, and that can be negotiated too. We, the contracts are, are common where, you know, we would hire an outsider or not, let's not even say Casella, because we're look, talking about other possibilities. We're hiring a contractor to collect things. Now currently, right now. All prices at the transfer station are set by Casella. We only set the price of the individual bags, the one dollar per. Twelve pounds, I think it is. Yeah, one per twelve pounds. All those other prices have been agreed to and the schedule just turns over, but Casella, because Casella. Operates the place, they pick it up, they set the price for tires, for, for everything else. We don't collect now for uh, recyclables and uh, I agree not charging that, but recycling is becoming a very big money loser. For these companies. So that's uh, another thing I'm sure they're gonna wanna talk about too.
Well, when they come and pick up the garbage, they take the garbage bill and they recycle them then and they put it in the same truck. I've seen them do it.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow that.
When they bring, take the garbage, you have two barrels. One is garbage, one is recyclables. The truck was by, picks up the garbage, dumps it in the truck, picks up the next truck and dumps it right in the same truck.
Bin trucks, Ken. The new trucks are multi-binned. So you have one part of it is built for recyclables. And another part is built for household waste. There's a third variety now that can take organics. Uh, I know that, that TAM had spent a lot of money converting trucks to multi-bins. Uh, otherwise you have to have uh, two trucks run the route. On different days. One that just takes recycling and one that takes uh, 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 garbage. So.
Looked like it puts you in the same hole to me.
Yeah, but you know, there's, it's, it doesn't. It, it doesn't. That would be a huge violation that they would be fined heavily for.
Well, I always thought it was, but.
Yeah, that's stuck with bins.
Okay, I'll pick you up for it. I, I didn't go out there, but.
As any, uh. I wonder if somebody couldn't come up with a kiosk that would dispense stickers with a, for, for a credit card being put in.
We've seen them, we have them, and it's absolutely one hundred percent doable. We've already looked into it. Uh, when we were designing the new transfer station, which by the way, we're gonna redesign. Uh, I wanna go back to my original plan, so there's a walkways that you dump down into things.
Yeah.
Uh, but we looked at that and it was just put off. Uh. Yeah, you just hardwire it, which is easy because we have the whole garage there. And uh, yeah, it would just dispense tickets. It would have to be collected, but uh, you know, it's, it would be easy. But you need someone there to physically watch to make sure everybody is using their stickers. Even in this year where we haven't raised the prices, we're not physically selling stickers this year. Uh, people have been excellent about weighing and putting the right amount in the collection box. So that's been very good and we certainly appreciate that. Um, but just from this conversation, you can see there's many. Items to discuss here. And I think we need to get that going with, with our current contractor and then we can branch off uh. And can I have an easy pathway to check who is actually licensed or interested in working in Southern Vermont? Cause uh, yeah, like you said, County Waste, Republican, and they work on the fringes, but they're not trying to make any inroad in here.
Well, I was just thinking they ought to be, there's gotta be somebody.
We'll look into it. But meanwhile, we'll just see where we sit with Casella, if that's all right with the board.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, is that, that okay with everybody? So kinda got your. I just wanted to make you aware of all the complexities of what's, what's gonna happen here and that sort of stuff, so. So Kenny, Kenny and I will be representatives. In the, in the contract negotiations, okay?
Yep. I just came on Tuesday morning, that's all our, and gotta be after eleven at.
All right, we'll make it no Tuesdays.
Not to get off point, but with everybody doing their composting, has there been any problem with bears yet?
Haven't heard any.
Uh, neither, neither have I.
We've been collecting compost at the transfer station for probably. Close to three, three and a half years and we've not had an incident there. And we collect a lot of compost there.
Let's not be on their, their diet or something.
Yeah. People eat well, I don't know.
Have put the right bait in it, yeah.
Right?
Okay, um, next on the agenda, hazardous mitigation uh, plan. Uh, this will, this would be the last meeting uh, that it's of, for comments. Does anybody have any comments? And is there anybody in the uh, from the public that has any comments on it? I believe being known, I think we probably can approve it at this meeting. Is that right, Dave?
Uh, what we'll do is uh, we will now forward it to FEMA.
That's right.
And then when it comes back from FEMA and from the state, then we'll, the board will actually have a formal resolution to adopt the plan.
Okay. So I'm just, we're, we're just looking for comments at this time, I guess.
Yeah, it's the last opportunity for anyone to make a comment on it. We are making some changes uh, that were made by someone who's already commented. Uh, specifically regarding the railroad tracks and uh, possible derailments, the oil cars and things like that. So we are commenting on that thing.
On seeing no comments, uh, we probably can go on to the next on the agenda, the DPW report.
All right, I'm just bringing that up. Uh. We have is uh, this week their crew is out fixing, uh, grading and adding materials to all the sections that are in need. Uh, Mike says pretty much every dirt road had an area that needs attention throughout the town. East Road, on the east side, East Road is the worst. Uh. And they started there today. Our cat grader is down. It's waiting on parts. It's a bad hydraulic system. Uh, we borrowed North Bennington's grader, so we do have our usual two graders out working. And uh, that is pretty much what they will be concerned with. The mud season so far over the last. Couple of days before the weekend of the weekend, um, we only had four complaints on, on four different roads and, and we got to them uh, as quick as we could. Uh, the John Deere will be working on the east side and the North Bennington grader will be working on the west side. And that's the North Bennington grader being operated by us. Uh, they've kindly loaned that to us as we exchange equipment throughout the years. As the different departments have different needs. And they've been good enough to let us use that for the next few weeks. Uh, the pack cart, you know, it's a part for the grader. It's been ordered. It's like everything, you just have to wait for it to show up. I did have one other question. I'd like the board just to make this kind of official. Uh, as we hopefully don't have much with mud season, but I'd like the board just to authorize that uh. Uh, Mike and I, the foreman, can authorize overtime uh. For longer workdays or on Saturdays or Sundays uh, to address any road problems caused by uh, the mud situation. Uh, just wanna make sure that he knows that if he feels it ne- necessary, that he can ask the crew for overtime to get the roads into shape.
I thought he had that already.
Yeah, it's come up once before. I just wanna make sure that uh, it's always. Is more interested in the snow. I just wanna make sure that if the crew's out there working on Saturday, we're all in agreement that they can have the overtime for it.
Need a motion.
I thought that was understood.
And we don't need a motion, as long as it's all understood and no one has a comment on it. I think that's good enough.
Do we have consensus on that, on everybody? Okay.
Okay.
I agree, I agree. Uh, I, I think just a comment, uh, every year, uh, there's a section of road, uh. Uh, just before Sally Gannon Road that turns right into a swamp. And uh, this year it's just like a blacktop, all the work that they did putting in the drains. The, he calls them burritos, French drains, whatever you wanna call them. Did, did the ditching in the right way. It, it's, it's really impressive what the difference it makes. I, I think uh, every year, I think we just have to identify some. Troublesome spots. Uh, go at it proactively like we have. No, no big projects anymore, but just a, a little bit each year. And I think uh. Think we'll get to the upper handle on it. I don't think it's been bad this year, but of course, the weather is a big, big factor too.
I've been saying that, and it's starting to show up.
It is, isn't it? Yep. Okay. Any, any other business? I would like to kinda, at the next meeting, I would ask that each of you uh, come with a list of. Things that you think we should try to accomplish this year. Um, I don't care if it's. Wha- whatever. Uh, for instance, I, I think we should uh, have a real aggressive tree policy. Uh, going after a lot of these dead trees and that, that are gonna start haunting us in storms and that type of thing. That would be one of my things. So if you have any other ideas, what uh. I know Ken, we tried a couple of years ago to change the zoning, well, uh, just because it uh. We can still try on certain things, so uh, please bring a list of what you would like to accomplish this in the coming year or two years. Um, and we'll kinda talk about them, uh, decide which ones are practical and so on and so forth and. Go forth from there, rather than just being reactive to everything. I think we should be proactive about some things.
Sounds like a good idea. So we'll get a list of action items together and uh, present them to you and hopefully we can get some action.
Yep. Uh, any other business? We do uh, have to have a executive meeting, uh. Being no other, any other discussion or any other business, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Some move.
I, I got one thing.
Yes, go ahead.
Could uh, Dave sent me that liaison list, so that we email it to me so that I can look it over for the week.
You should have gotten it last weekend.
I missed it somewhere.
Moving tomorrow.
Thank you.
I think I got it mine, Ken. I'll shoot it to you.
Okay, well, I, I don't, give me two, three, I don't care. I won't miss a bit.
I'll send it every hour on the hour, Ken.
Okay, uh, we have a motion in a second to go into executive session. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So carried. So Cat T, Cat TV and Dave, do your thing.